Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and this is the ninth January of 2020. Welcome, everyone. Let's start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. The first item on the agenda is actually the approval of the agenda. There is no public hearing, we've already had that. So that was an error. Everything else should be okay. If anyone would like to move to approve the agenda as amended. Chairman?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, don't think we have any public comment, nor new business, really, tonight, so we'll go right down to old business. So, everyone was sent a copy, I've got a few extras if anyone needs them, of the Planning Commission's Guide to Service and Conduct and Transparency. This is in addition to the personnel policies that you also have at your desk, that the Select Board, the Select Board passed those personnel policies and is looking for everyone to sign the signature page by itself. Before us is our guide, so I hope everyone is, too bad Dana's not here, but we do have Sherman, who's on the committee, and Jerry, right.
And me.
And Norm. Do you want, do any of you want to start off and just guide us through the guide?
Well.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right. I just, I think that what we did was simply just kind of condense everything that Dana had originally kind of put together to review and certainly think that it covers most everything but in kind of short.
Can you speak up a little?
Sure. I just said, I think we took Dana's original just ideas and we condensed them down to just a few paragraphs because we knew we were going kind of along with the Select Board's personal policy, so we just thought it would make sense to, right? I mean, if I'm not mistaken, we just kind of reduced it and.
Yeah, we condensed, yes, we condensed what we had.
Right, right, and I think it.
I had redrafted Dana's and then took what I did and boiled it down and condensed it more. Everybody was in agreement.
Yep.
I think the reason that it's coming up now is we started to vote on it and Jim asked for some more time to look at it, so.
Right. So, I think it covers just about everything and I think it's pretty simple to understand and.
And it's one pager.
And one page.
One small. Sherman, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. It just, I thought the only thing in here that was at all different was the personal opinion of members and we had, I think this whole, our discussion of this started with that, personal opinions of members where they made difference. I thought that was the key, I think we spent quite a bit of time working on that, just to be sure that we were comfortable with it and it said what we wanted to say.
So, as it reads right now, there's two parts to that personal opinion. The first one essentially is that no member will, you say, purport to act but speak on behalf of the Planning Commission, right? Unless specifically authorized. And the other one, it doesn't negate expressing your public opinions, in the second bullet here, it looks like, but everyone is asked to let the Commission know when you want to express your opinions publicly, whether it's the Select Board or, you know, if it's news media, the newspaper, anything like that.
And the other thing was to make it clear if, that it's their personal opinion, not necessarily the opinion of the Board, to make it clear when you're discussing something that this is my, in my opinion, this is not the opinion of the Board and I have had not discussed it before.
Norm, did you want to say something or was it Jim?
Jim had asked for some time to look at it, so.
Did you have a comment, Jim?
No.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with it?
What's that?
Are you comfortable with this? This is what you asked to look, we brought it up last time and you, we didn't vote on it because you said you wanted some time to review it.
Well, is that going to be incorporated into the full packet that we got here?
No, as I, I think it's just something we have internally and every time a new member is appointed, we'll be signing off on it if we pass it and then every new appointment signs it.
And it incorporates this.
It goes into Bill's files somewhere. Andy, do you have anything you want to ask or say? Did you get a chance to look it over?
Subric 2 in the bottom.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Norm, and I think it's just fine.
Number 3 incorporates this.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. All right, I'll shut back down again.
Permission, here.
So, we'll have to change the date on number 7.
Yes.
Of the year and add the date.
Great. And that's already, the Select Board's already passed that.
So, just each of the committee members just chimed in about the process of coming up with this.
Okay. Sorry, I figured I had a few minutes.
Okay, well Dana, do you, I mean, you missed most of the discussion here. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I appreciated the time and energy that the committee as a whole invested in it and I think we should applaud the work that we put forth, so.
Okay.
The only thing that I've got to say about this, and it applies to most anything that human beings on, sitting on a board can come up with, and that is, down the road two or three years after this thing is set around for a while, something will crop up that really doesn't fit, but it, but it doesn't belong anywhere else. And it's the unintended consequences that I'm worried about in such things.
Okay. And you don't think there would be an opportunity to revise this document at that point if there were some obvious unintended consequences?
Well, I'm not going to spend a lot of time trying to think what might trigger I've served in public office in one respect or another in three different towns for a total of something like 35 years, when everything is added together. And personally, I really don't see the need for the Planning Commission's efforts here.
But I hope you're not taking it personally. I think this was probably, this was initially precipitated when Norm went before the Select Board, so please don't take it personally.
I, I am not going to sign anything that I feel might impede my ability to talk with people in town, whether it's the Select Board or somebody else regarding issues.
Right. And we don't want anyone to feel that way. And this doesn't prohibit that.
So, that's where I'm sitting.
Okay. Anyone have?
I guess I didn't fully understand. Are you, did you mean, Jim, that you think this would prohibit you from expressing your opinion?
What was the question? I didn't hear.
No. Did you, I didn't understand whether you thought this would cause you some problems in expressing your opinion. Did you think that the way this is written, it prohibits it or impedes your expression, expressing your opinion?
I, I, I don't know how to answer that. What I stated just a minute ago covers it. I don't know how else I could.
So, does that mean that you don't intend to sign it? Is that, that's what I did.
I'm going to sign it as receipt of the copy only.
Okay.
That's all it's intended.
Whether I agree with it or disagree with it is another matter.
Okay. That's all I was asking. Thanks. But for the record, you're still free to go to whatever group and express your public opinion, just the Commission would like to know.
Okay.
Either beforehand or afterhand, right? As this is written?
Norm. People are going to express it as an individual perspective and not as representing the collective of the Planning Commission, so that that's clear. Because I think everybody as an individual citizen has a right to speak their mind in any given context, but if the Planning Commission has done work on something and they want to express their opinion as an individual unrelated to the Planning Commission, they're free to do that. They should just make that clear to whomever they're addressing. That's my understanding.
Norm?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is really narrowly confined. It is not intended, as I understand from Dana and from my, from Dana's first draft, from what prompted the first draft, from what I did, what the committee did, is that it really is not intended at all to prohibit you from talking to me at the dump and disagreeing with what the Commission did. I mean, there's no language that says that and there was no intent to do that. It's strictly whether somebody expresses their own view and doesn't make it clear that it is their own view in an official setting, or in a letter to the editor, like I write, you write, and that's all it's intended to do.
Well, the report that I sent to the Select Board shortly after I came on board here only had my name on the bottom, no one else.
And nobody objected to that. We were just concerned because we weren't advised. When I went, when I went to the Select Board with my suggestion to add a criteria to the preferred sites delineation, I came to the Board twice, talked to them about it, showed my draft, then went there and then there was some confusion as to whether I made it clear enough that it wasn't the Board, that it was my personal one and not the Board's. And the two of those situations, I think, motivated us to clear the issue.
How long ago was that?
Oh, within four or five months? Yep.
It was almost at the same time, Jim, I think.
What's that?
It was almost around the same time that you sent your letter. It was within.
Three weeks or.
A meeting.
Yes.
It was the meeting before, right? Yeah, so we're talking, I don't know, the difference between May and June.
No, it was, it was all around the same time. It was all around, it was all involved with the energy plan and it just seemed, as we looked at it and worked on it, and I think very collaboratively, the, this was a good idea and what I tried to do was take everybody's view and try, including yours, about not agreeing to it and just saying you were giving it, and everybody seemed to think that was a good idea as well. And Mary Beth had thought it was a good idea that every new member should get it and we just tried to make a consensus.
Well, I can, see, I wasn't aware that you had submitted anything, but I can certainly have a little sympathy for the chairperson, knowing that this, her group is on the verge of being out of control maybe, but I think that's the worst case size of, but that certainly was not my intent to put it out of control. My intent was only what was stated in the document that went to them.
And in Norm's situation, he went to the Select Board after just informing me.
Well, I came to the Board first with the written thing.
Okay. But we, the Planning Commission had already talked about what Norm wanted to propose and wasn't in favor of it, so that was another reason this all got going, because the Planning Commission didn't, this group did not feel like.
And.
I'm sorry?
We didn't feel it was necessary to add criteria to it.
Right, and you didn't, and the group didn't feel like it had been heard or it, you know, Norm went around the group.
Well, I said I would too and I told everybody I was going to do it and speak as an individual and then apparent, at least the way Dana heard, I mean, you were there when I did it.
Right.
But Dana, the way Dana heard it is I didn't make it clear that I was speaking for myself as an individual and not for the Planning Commission.
So, we had these two different situations come up about the same time and that's what led to this. You know, this lays out, makes it clear that the Planning Commission wants to hear about this stuff, wants to have some say. So, does anyone want to move to accept this guide?
I move to accept the guide and modify it with the year at the bottom, modify. Second?
Okay. Any more discussion?
Call.
Okay.
Call the question.
You want a question, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Dana, you want to take care of or?
Sure. Either I can do it or Bill can do it, doesn't matter to me. If you'd like, I can give you a cleaner copy, Bill. I'll take off the October 30th because that was just the date at which the final, I think that was the final version of the subcommittee, so if you'd like, I'll remove that and then change the bottom and send it off to you.
Okay, great.
So, we won't need a date up the top since the date will be down the bottom based on the adoption date for tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So, 2020.
Okay.
I'll make sure that I get that to you. It may not be tomorrow, but maybe Monday.
And Dana, you heard that the Select Board's personnel policies, they're on your table there too. Here is the signature page.
Oh, yes, I did see that. Yep.
Okay. Mary Beth, are you ready for the next item?
Sure.
You're on.
I don't need to send this, Bill has the, the only thing I'm going to change is this, is that correct? I don't need to do anything with this.
Just there's a signature page.
Oh, this has to go to Bill?
Yes. So, if he doesn't, it's going to be tonight if you want to go read it or it's going to be tonight if you want to.
That's right. You did good.
Okay, the floor is yours.
All right. So, I cast around my summary of the municipal day, way back in October. So, it's something that the state has done for towns at least the last couple of years and it used to be at the statehouse, now it's each region.
That's not the one that's going to be distributed.
Different individuals from the state come and.
There's going to be a new one that takes the sale.
... permitting programs related to natural resources. And so, I have a summary here of everything they covered in the day. It was about a half-day meeting that they went over, permitting and different environmental programs, and then the afternoon they talked about self-driving cars and different mapping programs that the state has. So, I was just there in the morning. So, the first thing they talked about was permitting in general, so if anyone is working on a project, whether it's the town or a business, an individual, the first step is to talk to the permit specialists of the state and they'll go through, look through some details about the project, they can let you know which permits you'll need and who to talk to with the state. So, I have his contact information on the sheet. Someone from the rivers program with the state talked about, more specifically town roads, and how to design and maintain roads with rivers in mind. Zapata with the wetland program talked about wetland permitting and the benefits of wetlands. They talked about clean water funding and laws around clean water in the state. Someone from the agency of agriculture talked about farm water quality related to towns. Someone talked about the new recycling law and the food scrap composting law, went over some items that are restricted from landfills, and someone talked about the option for wood heat for municipal buildings. So, all of those presentations are on the website on the form, so you can look at the PowerPoint that they went through and all of the handouts that they passed out are on there too. And then, if you guys have any questions about any of those particular programs, let me know. There isn't anything that really jumped out on things that we're working on right now, but it's more kind of a general overview of different programs. It was interesting that I went.
Was there a focus on any specific audience or?
It was mostly, so mostly town planning, commission, zoning, town, just general town clerks, town offices, just kind of a mix of people.
I think the idea is to make it as broad as possible to cover as many bases, so people from towns that don't deal with this every day can have like this smorgasbord almost of topics and learning.
I guess that can also get names of people to contact, that's.
Exactly.
That seems to be key here.
Yeah. Be aware of what's out there and then, you know, each person spoke for maybe 15 or 20 minutes, kind of a quick overview.
Would the food scrap ban come in July 1st? How's that going to change activities at the landfill? Do you know?
I'm not sure for Rutland Town, but I know, I know that they have to start collecting, right?
Yeah, there's going to be a separate total. They have already planned for that to set up for food scraps and stuff.
They've got small buckets now.
Yeah, they're planning some, a lot of education because the townwide celebration's going to be just after this goes into effect, so they're going to have planned some education events for that as well, but the others, they're already talking about it, so.
But probably with most things with the state, there won't be too much enforcement of this, I mean, people aren't going to be going through their garbage bags to see if there's food in there.
You'd get a nice job.
For you.
So, if you guys have any questions or want more information, let me know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this happens once a year and it used to be, I think you mentioned, it used to be just in Montpelier, but now they have these satellite days and half-days around the state. Rutland's usually a full day, it's usually a good program. So, it happens, was this one Halloween?
Yes.
Around that time every year?
It was great, the people were wearing costumes and.
Thank you. Another thing that kind of left, was left over from the last year was a look at our budget. So, sorry, Norm. Like I said, it's not that exciting.
Nope.
It's not that much, well, there's certainly enough money in here, not a whole lot of money. There's six line items and right after the line items, there is a column for what was spent the last fiscal year, so the total is at the bottom, $5,457. The next column is our current budget and so that's $10,025. And then, the next column is, this is not a full six months, but it's pretty close. I got these numbers from Kirsten, she still with us?
Another week.
Another week?
And the next week.
Oh, what's happened?
Kirsten, we need a new town clerk and treasurer.
I didn't know that. I missed, I've been out of loop. When did that, never mind.
She gave a notice a couple of weeks ago.
Before the holidays? Oh.
Right after, I think. There was a story in the Herald.
Yeah. Oh, I missed it. Now you're back on top of things.
So, with the actuals, we've spent a little over $3,000 so far. I don't think there's much here, we haven't gotten many bills from Andres yet.
No, I don't think we've got one from his last time here.
Yeah. So, we still have some things coming, but I'm perfectly comfortable with where we are here. And then the last column is what will be proposed, what will go before voters for these six line items, the same, same amount of money.
Right, but it's all incorporated into the.
The general budget part.
Right, there's no vote on our small budget, it's the aggregate.
Robert, what is the, so it's Planning Commission, $4,000, 2019, 220, and that also proposed in 220, 221, and what is, what is that?
You folks, that is when you put in your timesheets and any others, that's usually the one expense there. And the regional commission up there is the one right above that, that includes the annual dues plus the regional commissioner's time and he can submit, he or she can submit a timesheet as well.
Who's our delegate there?
It's Dick Madison?
Oh, Dick Madison.
Bill.
Bill Madison.
Sorry. So, that's that. Any questions? Speaking of Andres, we learned the other night at the Select Board meeting that he offered to help Bill as the permits for stormwater activities come in, so that will be, that's welcome.
What happens?
Guess it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, no. I'm shocked.
And we're still waiting for that interactive map. I, it kind of fell by the wayside, I'll have to get with Andres to make sure he remembers he offered to do that for us. And that, you know, that kind of stuff will be coming through the budget in the future as well. But his offer was, you know, when a permit request comes in, he'll review it with Bill, if Bill makes his head. Just wondering, Bill, has the state stormwater permit come in for the Rob Shon place?
No.
Subdivision? Okay. And refresh my memory, the 90-day clock starts when we get that, that condition we put on our motion? Or does it start with a?
Well, it addresses conditional approval, it just says from the date of approval, so. So it may be from the date the other night, maybe from the last meeting that it starts that 90 days. And it's, because you did tell, um, turning the phones, you have 90 days to file the Mylar.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's accurate. That's, I, I don't, I don't know where they are in their permitting time with the state, but I, I, I think it would go from the time it's approved here because you've got all the control over the other things. It's just, it's just this, this approval.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Um, yeah, just let us know when, when you hear about that permit.
Do we have, you know, that, that raises a couple, pardon the old Norman's lawyer coming into the, um, but it raises a couple of questions in my mind. A, um, if they do not get for some reason or another a subdivision permit within the 90 days, so it finalizes our action, um, can we extend that 90-day? Do we have authority to do that?
Well, the 90 days is to get us a Mylar, right?
Right.
It's not necessarily me signing or us signing off on that.
Right. Is it to record a Mylar?
90 days. But if the Mylar, I mean, but the Mylar, we need to show the subdivision on it.
Right, I don't think it's official until it's signed.
Well.
It doesn't have to be signed by you within 90 days.
Right, it just has to be submitted.
Right.
It doesn't have to be recorded until the permit comes in, right?
Well, it can't be recorded until it's signed.
Until it's signed.
And it can't be, but?
It won't be signed until we see the permit.
Right.
Okay, so it's just presenting us with the Mylar.
Right, so he can submit the Mylar, which could satisfy the 90-day window and then when he gets the, when they get their approval.
They'll come back and say it does.
Then they can actually say, okay, then, then you can sign it.
But they, they might, okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll deal with it. It's too many.
Yeah, I mean, as I remember the subdivision regs, it's just, it's very isolated. You have 90 days to get us a Mylar, you know?
I don't think it took into consideration any of the circumstances, so.
Right.
And I would think that 90 days in there because just to ensure that things haven't changed from, from the submission. So we would, we probably would, would look at it to see if there've been any changes or if there's anything that's sensitive where we think we need to look at it again.
But presumably, they will submit the Mylar based on the criteria that we, uh, waived and, uh, that we expected in terms of the changing of the boundary lines as well as the subdivision. And if that has taken place, I think I was the one who made the motion. I don't remember exactly, but I think I did. And, uh.
Read the minutes, yeah, give me the motion, all right.
It looked really well, too.
Yeah, I actually had a question. I think it was repetitive. Did I say it twice?
You, that is how you said it.
Okay. I just need, I need to go back and.
It took you a minute to get that one all squared away, so.
I know the second part was right. I was not sure about the first part, but anyway, um, once that was, that it was contingent upon their receiving the, right, approval. And that, um, as far as we're concerned, all they had to do was make the Mylar adjustments and submit that to us. If everything else goes through, we would approve it.
Right.
So that's all we need to do on the, on the backend.
So if you want, I can, I can reach out to him and tell him, you know, make sure you get it to us.
Yeah, just find him.
So we have, we have the Mylar pending.
Before March 20th or 19th.
Right, whatever, whatever the date is. And then when you get your approval, submit that and then the next meeting, you can bring it in for signature.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be great.
I had another question for you, Bill. What can you tell us about, um, the redevelopment of the Florid Plaza?
I haven't heard much lately. They, they're, they're working on it. It's, they're doing it all themselves. So it's just, uh, but they're, they're moving along. I mean, they've got, they've put siding up a few weeks ago and they're putting new windows in, so it's, it's getting there. But they're, they're doing it themselves, so I don't think it's a fast process, but it's coming along.
Guess I haven't seen it for a couple of weeks. Okay, any, any other announcements or news?
Do you know, um, what about the pocket park? I know that we kind of tabled that for a while just because of the stormwater ordinance and everything, but do you know if there have been things going on in the meantime?
I think that was waiting for GMP.
Oh, okay.
Because they're going through their dam recertification.
Right.
And that was going to tie in kind of nicely to that project, but they need to, Mary was working with them on that, so they need to give the town easement or permission or something because both sides of the, of the river are, are theirs. So they need to get the town permission and then, then they can, then think other things circle forward. But yeah, that's still on the, still on the list, yeah, naturally.
Does that committee meet? That there is a pocket park committee?
There's no committee. There, there's going to be an ad hoc committee that Mary's going to put together. There's some residents from, um, right around the corner that want to be on it, that came down to that meeting when we were there. Uh, so they want to be on it. So there's, there's going to be, but it's just kind of hanging out there at the moment because G, the, the GMP was contacted. I think Mary was working with them and they, they need to, they need to get the permission to use it. Then once we get that, then it can go, go on from there, so.
Yeah, I think there's several members here that wanted to be on that. Mary Beth and Sherman, did you ask or maybe?
I, I didn't. If I needed, I'd be willing to.
But, um, yeah, at least Mary Beth. If, if, when Mary Ashcroft, when she gets to, to having some more meetings, you just remind her.
Yeah. I'll, I'll look them up at work, so.
Thank you.
I guess we're down to the minutes, approving the minutes from December 19th.
Move to approve.
I have some corrections.
Need a second and then you can have a discussion.
Was it second?
It hasn't said.
I'll take it.
Okay.
I have some possible corrections to the minutes. Um, in the third bullet on the public hearing, it says some research will be done into the specific requirements of question 18 to see what should be included in it. Was that what he said?
Cause it was talking about the, the stone walls should be included and what were the features that should be, should be part of that.
Okay, should we say features that should be included?
That's not what it said at the meeting. But it didn't, that's what he was, that's what he was kind of talking about, but that's not exactly what they said in terms of researching it. So it was talking about what should be included.
So site features and number 18 are the same thing?
Right.
It seems to say what he said, and I think we understand that. I don't know that we have to interpret that for the public.
I had the same type of question with respect to number, the fourth bullet, but I think we all understand it, is that there was a partition action, a court judgment, and no subdivision permit. Um, it could be, I mean, we could state it better. I'm not sure it's worth a fight. Um, no, I have nothing else. I don't think, nevermind.
Um, I was wondering if we could standardize the, the description language of what the permit is that we're waiting on. It's in the second bullet and in the next to the last bullet under the public hearing section. The first time, we call it a wastewater permit. And then the second time, we're, it's conditional on state approval of the subdivision being.
That's what was said. So I, I don't disagree if that's what was said.
And since they're, it's probably okay since they're one and the same.
And they are.
They are. Okay.
I was questioning it too as I'm, as I'm writing it, I'm like, we're saying two different things, but that's, that's how it was said.
That's how it was said. Sherman, did you?
No, I was just, a more general question is, um, when there's something like this where there's a possibility that, that it could be misunderstood when, when different terminology was used, do we want to insert, make it clear? I mean, I mean, do we want to stick strictly to what was said? Because when, when we're talking, we're a little casual and we understand and we shake our heads, but once it gets in writing, we don't necessarily have the advantage of all the conversation that went on. So, and I'm not suggesting we change anything here at all, but just in general, do we want to, where we think it's necessary, just add a comment or something to clarify?
Or maybe a parenthetical.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was going to say. Either in the first, either in the second bullet or, I don't know, what is it, seventh or eighth bullet, um, next to the last bullet, in one of those, put a parenthesis. So where it says a state stormwater permit, parenthesis, put subdivision permit or flip it on, next to the last, um.
We could in the second bullet say a state wastewater.
Parenthesis subdivision, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's what we should do. And you're right, Sherman, sometimes you have to, and that's all I was intending.
So this, this state website calls it a wastewater permit. Water slash wastewater permit on their website. So, uh, if you were going to add anything, I would, to the second to the last bullet after subdivision, I would put wastewater permit.
I agree.
Yep.
Just because that's, that's where the difference begins, you know?
Just to make it clear.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's where it should go.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mary Beth.
Norm, Mary Beth is saying she feels, and I agree, that it should be at where it's second, where it's stated secondly, that's because it's, it says subdivision permit, it should be wastewater because the state calls it a wastewater permit. So instead of putting it near the top, I just kind of agree that it should go where that first time it changed from what the state calls it.
So we're taking out subdivision in that second reference?
Or just add in parentheses, right? Yeah.
Wastewater sub. I'm sorry? Say it again?
What I understand, Jerry to be saying is it ought to come at the bottom.
It's already stated at the top. That's what he's saying.
Yeah.
So since it starts as wastewater.
Right.
I agree totally. I'm sorry, I kind of jumped.
Or we can take out the word subdivision and just replace it with wastewater permit. I think either one is.
Since I was the one who made the motion, I would be happy to accept wastewater in place of subdivision because I think the man making the motion had a brain freeze and actually used the wrong word. So I would happily accept a different attribution to my choice of words.
Still correct, it's not.
No, I know, but.
Right. We do interchange them all the time.
Right.
Right. We'll do, okay.
And the same thing is true. I think I, I was repeating myself in the previous bullet that I referenced 20169 twice, and I don't think I needed to do that.
I don't think you do either, bud.
So.
Yeah, that was confusing.
The motion is accurate, it's.
Right, but it may have result, it may have reflected a stutter rather than an actual intentional motion.
Too bad, huh?
You can leave it however you want, but I would not be opposed to having my, having my, um, uh, good sense.
Can I make one suggestion?
It's understandable here. It doesn't understand?
Yeah, it has a flow.
It's, I didn't, I mean, yeah.
As long as you're good with it, I'm good with it.
I didn't say that.
But right after that second reference to book 201, page 69, can we say that being one, spell out one, subdivision is the number one? Because it's not the number one parcel. It's, they're making one parcel out of two.
One consolidated parcel?
One.
Nope.
Uh, you went a step too far.
Being one parcel.
Well, I'm leaving.
Anything else with the minutes?
I better stop making motions.
You're amending your motion?
What's that?
Did you amend your motion?
I did not. If I, I would be happy to, um, amend the motion to, uh, accept the minutes as corrected or as amended.
I, I second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? All right.
All right, no, I'm, I'm for it, not against it.
So Andy, you still there?
Don't think so.
Takes a while to undo.
Yes, I am.
There we go.
It's much better actually, I can, the audio's been far better than it was on FaceTime.
On our end, too.
Oh, good.
So our next meeting is January 30th. Um, will you be back in Vermont?
I doubt it, but I.
Okay.
I'm coming on the 20th. I may well be there, yes.
Okay.
I can't say for you, but if not, I'll definitely attend this way. But we'll be back, we should be back in our regular office by then, right? In our regular meeting room.
We should be.
So hopefully we can try, um, FaceTime again. When I'm, when I'm home, I'm going to be home around the 20th. I'll get in contact with you if we could, spend a couple of minutes and maybe we can do a test run with it.
Okay.
See if we can make any improvements, so.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Excellent.
Yeah. Any other comments from the, from the balmy state of Florida?
Oh, we're having a heat wave coming up here. It'll be in the eighties.
You know, it's going to be almost 60 here.
Well, it must be the same heat wave.
It must be.
Saturday and Sunday, yeah.
Okay, Andy, yeah?
It's, uh, very enjoyable down here, I have to say that.
Okay, that's enough.
Okay. Rightness Vermont, I really do. All right, well, thank you for allowing me to attend.
Yeah, sure.
I appreciate you looking up with me and I will say goodnight, Trevor.
Thanks, Andy.
Goodnight, Andy.
Goodnight, goodnight.
Goodnight.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, what we have for our next meeting? Most of it. Maybe we'll sign a Mylar. Does anyone have anything they'd want to discuss at our meeting? I'm still trying to get the, the consultant that worked on the business route four recommendations, but I told him April, you know, not, not try to come down. He lives up in.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The consultant, remember we've been trying to get the consultant for business route four, the, um, not the Mar, was it the Marble Valley study? It was the longer study, not just the path. I think it was the Marble Valley study.
Yep.
To have him come down and we go through his suggestions and ask him questions about them and get a better understanding of what, what we might be able to promote or do for the select board. Um, but that looks like that'll be April at the earliest.
Yeah, but we need to be prepared for that meeting, too. I mean, to really go through it.
Yeah, I don't have a confirmation from him yet, so I'll let, I'll let you know. Is there anything you'd like to do on the stormwater ordinance or are we just going to, like, just go on the fly?
Bill has been doing so well with that.
Not much to do, I think.
Or, maybe I'll try to have the interactive thing done by then and we can look at that.
Have there been any questions at all recently?
No.
I don't think we'll be much less prepared.
I think the next time.
I've got a question on tonight's agenda. You've got public hearing on, uh, minor subdivision for the Young and Rob Shawn place. Is that still an open item?
No. No, that was just a carryover from a past agenda. So that, that was a mistake.
Okay. It was deleted at the beginning of the meeting.
So, you know, it hasn't been, it's, hasn't been finalized because we're still waiting for them to get their state permit.
Right.
Stormwater slash, no, wastewater slash stormwater. And.
Wastewater parenthesis, stormwater.
And, and. And, and get the Mylar from them, but we don't need another public hearing. That was an error.
Okay.
Well, if you don't have anything else, you could look at question number 18 that we discussed a little bit. I could pull together, well, I don't know, um, the stone wall question.
Oh, okay, right, right. Yeah, yeah, Norm.
That would be worthwhile.
There was an outstanding question.
Yeah, the, just with the holidays and all the other stuff that Norm and Bill were not able to get together.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Oh, they're working on that. Okay, that's right.
But maybe we can get a report back and.
Well, we're going to try and meet next week. He's busy, what, Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll try to get to you by the end of the week. I'm tied up on Monday and Tuesday myself, so.
Yeah, we can iron that out and then figure out, um, what was the gentleman's name that came and asked for?
I know where, I know which parcel.
Yeah, we, we can figure out how we want to respond to him. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, say goodbye to this meeting space, I guess.
Yeah, we passed, we passed our inspection and, and so they're, they're moving in earnest next week, so. It's like we won't be meeting there till February because next meeting is pre-town meeting in the school, so.
Yeah, but we'll probably save it for the 30th for us.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be there. Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Jerry moved to adjourn and so. Adjourn. Thank you, everyone.